We will call the November 7th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask our clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderperson Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chapeleski.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lasik.
Here.
May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ten present, none excused.
We have a quorum. Our pledge this evening was initially scheduled to be led by Alderperson Ranky, but she has graciously yielded her time to the scout troop from Jefferson Elementary. So if you all want to rise and join us and take the lead, and I hope you knew this was coming. Thank you. We have four items on our agenda for public hearings this evening. However, item number three is canceled, so I am going to ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number One.
A hearing on the special use permit for the peanut butter and jelly deli proposed restaurant to be located at 6125 West Greenfield Avenue.
Mr. Stevel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll notice on the slide here, the peanut butter and jelly sandwich is in the building with the iconic astronaut chasing a peanut butter and jelly deli. So hopefully it's going to be as popular. Located in this building here, right next to Care for Kids that opened up earlier this year. The purpose of this public hearing is to approve of special use because it's a restaurant. A special use is required, and that's why we're having the hearing today. It's in a C3 zoning, which are allowed as a special use, about 300 square feet. The proposed hours for public operation are seven to three. The hours that they'll be allowed to be open are from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Nine parking spaces are required, but because they're within 800 feet of public parking lots, they meet all those requirements. There's a municipal lot here, a municipal lot here as well. The floor plan is as shown over here. The only difference is they made a minor change in taking out the countertop in this area, but so it'll be tables and chairs and that. Also, for dumpsters, in between these two buildings, there's an enclosure there, closed by a door, so they'll be allowed to have three dumpsters inside to be able to take care of their refuge. The Plan Commission has reviewed this, has recommended approval, or will hopefully recommend approval on November 7th. If you have additional questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stevel. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number One. I will ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number Two.
A hearing on an ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning property located at 9644 West Slinger Avenue from C3 Community Commercial District, M1 Manufacturing District, and their respective rights of way.
Mr. Stevel.
In the 6600 block of Slinger Avenue is a parcel that used to contain, I think it's about a duplex. In 2010, the duplex burned down, and then 2011, the owners removed the building. And now a landscaper wants to move into the site and bring it back into productive reuse. Because it's currently zoned C3, as noted up above here, surrounded by manufacturing, it's reasonable that it be rezoned to M1, and that's what we are proposing to do this evening as part of this public hearing. The long-range plan also has this whole area proposed to be used for manufacturing purposes. The Plan Commission recommended approval, and they also had an issue with transportation to make sure that the users were continuing to use the trucking routes within the city and heading to 84th Street and not going through the neighborhood. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Stevel. Are there any questions or comments from the council on Public Hearing Number Two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Barzak.
My recollection that the trucking runs on Slinger down to 100th Street, correct? I believe it stops at 100th?
Yes.
Okay. And are they aware that there's no trucking on 92nd Street?
Correct.
They're totally aware that any time that they want to in or out, it's going to be to 84th Street?
They have to go to 84th Street.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Barzak. Any other comments or questions from the council? There are no questions from the members of the council. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience?
Louis Kowieski, 719 South 97th. I've got a lot of questions, real lot. I live at -- should I bring that picture back up with the residences again? Okay, I'm a second house directly south of the proposed change. I've spoken to the corner house, I've spoken to that house where you have the arrow, and I've spoken to the people to the left. None of us were crazy about this, and I'll tell you why. I was at the zoning meetings when Roth still had their battery thing down there. I've heard all the promises that were made as far as how many parking provisions were going to be provided, how this was going to be done, how that was going to be done. It's not being done. Today, I jumped on a running board of a truck going by my house hauling wrecks. 97th is totally, completely no trucking, as is 96th, as is 95th. I've talked with Alderman May numerous times about this, and now you're going to let in another. The guy where you've got to the left, he started out to be a bad neighbor. We talked with him a few times. He still uses Slinger and 97th because he's got heavy equipment. So he comes in to make a Y turn and a T to back his heavy equipment to the back of his lot, okay? That means a lot of bells, a lot of whistles, blocking Slinger with heavy equipment and with trailers at certain times of the day and the night, because now it gets dark at 4:30. And they don't quit that early. In the summertime, they work till 10:00. So you've got ding ding, bang bang, all that crap going on there at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. And I don't see that stopping, because what is this guy going to be doing? He's going to be doing the same landscaping as that guy. And I don't see any plan, or I want to see a plan, I want to see this thing laid on the side until certain criteria is met for the neighbors of this immediate area. If it has to be a special meeting, but it has to be resolved before you, once again, I see you already gave them approval, fine and dandy, but nobody talked to us. I talked to the guy in the corner house just before I came here. He said he never even got a notice. But I don't know if I believe that, but I got one, and I'm the second house in. But it gets back to you have to have the zoning application conditions of residency that if they're not met, you jerk it out from under their feet, rather than having to fight for years. I've lived there since 1977. My neighbors lived there since 1976. It's not like we're transient neighbors. We're familiar with the area from a long time ago. It was a lot quieter. We realize we can't live in a bubble. I realize that's a plowing main. I worked for the city for 26 years. I plowed that street many a time. And I know that when you have commercial vehicles out there, you can't plow around them. I remember plowing around a 30-foot sailboat half the winter one year because we couldn't get anybody to move it. And that was from one of those places over there. Tonight, when I jumped on the running board of the -- I got his picture. And I talked to him, he's co-owner of the very end, they repossess vehicles, okay? Alicia is the main owner, and the other guy, the guy I talked to, I thought he was just a driver, because I jump on their running boards, I give them the standard lecture. Look back there 50 feet. There's a no trucking sign. What are you doing heading south? I have to get this load here, I have to get this load there. My GPS says it's okay to go here. I said, "You telling me that GPS supersedes that regulation right there?" I've still got a legal CDL, and I know I have to listen to my signage. But these vendors, these guys now would be owners, and they have vendors, because half of this stuff over there is used car lots, and they fix wrecks, and you've got the guy in the very end that repossesses stuff. I mean, it's starting to turn out like when I worked for the city, you could go along mobile, and those streets over there weren't even city streets, because those car dealers used them as their parking lots. And the one right up there on 99th, right now, he's starting to do that too, only he's using more of the parking lot for the Mexican restaurant to put signs in there. Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. Nobody seems to care about it, you know? And it's getting worse, and it's getting worse, and it's getting worse. The other thing is, I'm older, okay? My neighbor to the left, she's a widower, recent, the guy in the corner, he gets up and he goes to work at 4:00 in the morning, okay? So I know the habits of my neighbors, but I also know the habits of the neighborhood. The older people are dying or moving away or going to a restroom, and now we're getting a lot of younger people, and they're pushing buggies past my house with kids and two dogs, okay? If nobody's going to police the no trucking regulations, my God, at least make it in the zoning regulations what they have to do, and make a stringent force in that regulation that if they violate it, they're gone. I don't want to come here every 10 years to complain. Too bad these little kids are in here, because I'd like to really unload on some of the stuff that goes on around here. And there's no reason for that thing to even have been approved, without even a plat.
There has not been approval on this.
It's been approved by the --
By the Plan Commission. It is number 64 on our agenda tonight. It has not been approved.
Are they going to provide a schematic, a plan?
The Plan Commission has got landscaping plans, yes, and parking.
Right now, that guy is using the 94th Street, right by Hank Aaron Bike Trail. That's his mode of operation. When I drove by there, he had about six to eight employee vehicles, and I don't know how many pickups and trucks and trailers he has, okay? So taking that into account, he's going to need at least 15 to 20 parking spaces for his business before he should be allowed to set up, and it should have to be paved. And he shouldn't have to use Slinger Avenue to turn his trailers, I mean, his trucks, around in Slinger Avenue. I mean, we're putting up with it with this guy across, because he's been pretty good. He listens. But all these guys to the west, they're like in their own little world. They're occupying the space, they're paying taxes, God bless America for that, but they should have to live under the regulations that they accepted when you guys gave them the okay to reside there and operate. I don't know if I'm the only one complaining.
I haven't heard it from anybody on this.
Well, I always talk to my Alderman.
Okay.
I guess I only have one.
Yep.
But, you know, before this thing goes ahead, you have to have another meeting, invite someone, neighbors, and you've got to have some kind of a really good drawing where they're going to be parking, how they're going to, mode of operations, because you know what he's going to be, he's not going to be cutting grass in another three weeks when the snow falls. He's going to be doing the same thing that the guy coming right down 97th is going to be doing. He's got a snow plowing operation that goes. And snow plowing, he works just like the city, all hours of the day and night. He's got his own little salt dome in the back, got white roof back, there's a salt dome. So, yes, I'm not a happy camper, and I don't want to be a more unhappy camper. You know, we're putting up with a lot of stuff now. I don't know what it would take to get more police enforcement down these no trucking streets, but I'll offer my driveway for a blind spot, and they can ticket trucks going by all day long, and they can take speeders going all day long. Because, okay, with Slinger's being down for, what, the last four years, if anybody should be complaining about that, it should be me, or my neighbors right there. But nobody's complaining, because we got used to it, and we're living with it. But all these guys are using excuses to turn our streets into raceways and thoroughfares that they're not allowed to even be on. And, you know, somebody here's got to let the police know, they've got to put up a trap here someplace. Once in a while, like I say, we've got a lot more kids in the neighborhood now than we have in the last 15 years, a lot more. And they're pushing baby buggies, and they're pushing with the two dogs. Halloween this year was really a fest. I had 600 and something candies, and they were gone a little about hour and a half. I couldn't believe it. I thought they were coming in on buses, but they're not. They're just walking around the block. So before you allow this kind of stuff, it looks good to maybe the zoning commission, but you've got to look outside that balloon. And I just want this on record, that this should not go forward until there's corrections made and conditions met.
Okay.
Any questions of me? All right.
Will we?
Will we be notified if there's anything going ahead? If there's a stall this? I'm not saying stall it for no reason. Stall it because you have to meet conditions in the neighborhood. And they have to understand that they have to live by the conditions that you guys put on them. Those guys down the street ain't. Only if we jump on their running boards and talk to them. The guy with the landscaping business, he realizes, it helps him to be a good neighbor if he listens to his neighbors, and he's done that. The guy with the auto body shop, one building over, there's three businesses out of that blue building. Two of them are auto body and Adams repairs in the back. The guy with that little shack in the back, he's also auto body. Now, from the understanding I got from the repo's outfit tonight, that whole large parking lot in the back is being used by not just one source, but three or four car dealers for drop-off points. So everybody's like this, "What are you doing on 97th Street with that truck? I was told to come this way." Well, if I'm a three or four car dealers, three or four owners, and I'm a responsible businessman, I would tell my vendors where they can travel and where they can't travel if they want to be good neighbors. Not only to be good neighbors, but to follow the Darwin Law. That's it.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience have comments or questions on Public Hearing Number Two? Okay, seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number Two. And like I had mentioned earlier, Public Hearing Number Three has been canceled this evening. That has been taken care of. So we will let the transition happen on who's presenting, and I will ask our clerk to read Public Hearing Number Four.
A public hearing on the 2018 City of West Dallas Mayor's Recommended Budget.
Ms. Rebecca Grill.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you, the visitors and citizens in attendance this evening. My name's Rebecca Grill, and I'm the City Administrator for the City of West Dallas. Joining me this evening is our Finance Director, City Treasurer, and Comptroller Peggy Stino, and she'll be helping me with any questions that you may have. We are pleased to, on behalf of Mayor Devine, we are pleased to present you the information regarding the Mayor's 2018 Recommended Budget. Prior to me starting the presentation, I would like to take a moment to personally thank Peggy and the members of the Finance Department for all of their dedication and assistance in putting the budget together for 2018. Many hours have been spent to ensure the accuracy and compliance of the budget information. The first information I'd like to provide is the demographics that we currently have for the City of West Dallas. We have comparables with other municipalities around our region. Also included is Milwaukee County information and the State of Wisconsin. The information highlighted in blue are the higher levels, and the lower levels are in red. As you can see, the poverty level in the City of West Dallas is 14.3 percent. The median age is 37.9. Our median housing value is about 141,700, and the population is about 60,000. Throughout the process of our 2018 budget, we had three budget goals in mind as listed on the slide. First was to review our current processes and see if we could streamline or improve any of those. Secondly was to realign our resources, to be more consistent with the current priorities and the wants and needs of the citizens. And thirdly, to reallocate our resources to different areas of needs. Excuse me for a minute. In January 2017, the Common Council adopted the 2017-2021 City of West Dallas Strategic Plan, which includes the five strategic goals listed on the slide. Number one, image, brand, and destination. Number two, quality of life. Number three, citizen engagement. Number four, economic vitality and sustainability. And number five, excellence in government. Highlights of the budget include these five strategic goals. First, focusing on, excuse me, losing my voice. Maybe Peggy can help me. We are currently working with a --
Okay, as far as our, sorry, I'm not much better, but our first strategic goal has to do with image, brand, and destination. And as you see on the chart, there's a number of initiatives that are involved with that. We're currently going through a branding and marketing study, as well as some other planning and programming to improve the city's image. The second goal, quality of life, again, there's a number of initiatives going on in the city that were identified in the strategic planning process that are improved, to improve the quality of life for our citizens and visitors in our city. And then as far as citizen engagement, we are always looking to get more citizens involved in outreach and activities on commissions and boards, and just more active in the community. And then the fourth strategic goal, economic vitality and sustainability, of course, something on all of our minds, creating a prudent budget, as well as maintaining all of our infrastructure through capital improvement programs, financial planning and policies, and development is always top of that list as well. And then as far as city services go, excellence in government, and making sure that we're providing the citizens the services that they're requesting, as always, in a high-quality manner, doing as much as we can as far as technology and other improvements to make those services better.
I'm going to try this again. We continue to have constraints and challenges with our budget that we've had in the past several years. They include maintaining the highest --
So definitely, as we just mentioned, you know, maintaining the service levels with the limited resources that we have, we're seeing costs increase at all times, and we're just trying to find ways to make things better and be more efficient as far as providing those services. We do have to stay in compliance with a couple of the state programs that are governing governments, the Expenditure Restraint Program and the Levy Limit Program. We'll tell you a little bit about that, a little bit more about those in a minute. And of course, as always, in a longstanding city, we definitely have a lot of capital needs that are going to be coming forth, presenting themselves in improvement settings in the future. And then, of course, we have a number of employees here in a service industry, so we want to make sure that we can find a good balance, pay them, the pay and benefits to get them here and retain them, while making sure that we do have prudent operations. And then, of course, we're always reviewing our operations and implementing changes. So the Expenditure Restraint Program is probably the biggest restriction that we have right now on the city budget, and so the state has rules in place on what we can increase the budget. That's always based on the larger economy, as well as the growth of our city. In the last couple of years, the restraints have been pretty tight. They have loosened up a bit in this year. We're able to go 2.2 percent on the limit, and the bottom line is, is if we don't meet those limits, we would lose a large amount of state aid, approximately $1.5 million. So that's, we know that's not an option for us, and we're just doing what we can to stay within those limits. On the other side, levy limits are also in place from the state, and what those do is those basically control how much your tax levy can increase. That also has been a pretty small amount over the last few years. However, with debt payment being outside of those parameters, this is not as restrictive of a limit as the expenditure restraint is. So this one is much easier to meet than expenditure restraint. And again, as we mentioned before, you know, we have road programs, utilities, and all of our facility repair and maintenance, as long with our equipment that we need to upkeep. We do have older facilities, as well as aging streets that are definitely showing their wear. So those are things that we're expanding on. In 2017, we expanded the Capital Improvement Program to be able to begin addressing more of those. There's also facilities audit going on right now to tell us a little bit more about what we need in our facilities in the future. Okay, we have, obviously, in the service industry, we have personnel costs of 34.8 million, as well as benefits of 15 million, basically making up about 84 percent of our budget. We do have 577 regular employees providing services, along with approximately 170 temporary and casual positions throughout the year, depending on various needs. We do have, our post-employment benefit liability is quite large. We are in the process, the Employee Benefit Committee is in the process of reviewing that, as well as all of the discussions with council and administration and finance, because our goal would be to get that, those costs under control for the future. Just a picture of what our staffing looks like. Total positions, 747, with those 575 regular employees. Oh, yeah, sorry. And there are, in this budget, there's about 3.75 positions from 2016 to 2017 that are being reduced. And we're not reducing services or limiting any services, we're just trying to reallocate our resources to provide a better method of delivery of services, using technology, et cetera, to focus on the services that our citizens are looking for. Then this is the, just a chart showing the revenue makeup for the city. I think the main thing here is, we do have about 60 percent of our revenues coming in from taxes from our citizens, another 20 percent from intergovernmental revenues. And then, you know, we do have licenses, charges for services, penalties, forfeitures, et cetera, but all of those things make up less than 20 percent of the budget. As far as general fund expenditures, again, you can see the services, you know, the large services performed, public safety, which includes police, fire, building inspection, that's our biggest cost, as you might imagine, approximately 54 percent, as well as public works, who do a lot of our street facility building, city maintenance, about 20 percent, and then health, culture, recreation, 8 percent, and then all other general government and internal services, less than 20 percent. services, less than 20%. Very hard to read. This is included in our budget, but I guess what I would want to say to this is, I just want everybody to know there are copies of the budgets available, both in the clerk's office as well as at the library and in the finance department. And this just happens to be a page of the budget showing the same thing we were just looking at the chart of. This is basically our fact sheet. When you look at the impact on the citizens for 2000, from 2017 to 2018, in 2017, the tax rate was 11.05 per thousand dollars of assessed value, which meant on a typical or an average $150,000 home, the taxes were approximately $1,657. In 2018, with all the changes implemented, the tax rate is proposed to be $11.26, which would equal 1,689 from taxes on a $150,000 home, which is approximately $31.50 per year, just over $2 a month. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you for that tandem presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the Common Council? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number four. We will now move on to item E on our agendas on page two, that is citizen participation. That is the opportunity for residents to address the council on any matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, and we aim to keep this portion of our agenda to about 30 minutes. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Hello tonight, and I'm Robert Brown at 2160 South 86th Street. I wanted to briefly talk about the protests that we had at the, against Aaron Rodgers and the Packers. We went out to the Green and Gold where they have their store. And I just want to touch a couple of things. Some of you might have read this in the paper that points out that I'm disappointed with mad at Aaron Rodgers. He stuck up for the guys kneeling. I'm more angry at the, I'm more, I am more angry at the athletes who kneel or sit during the National Anthem. But Rodgers gave him a pass. I know a lot of people sitting here probably are hanging over their TV sets, "Go Packers", you know? How rotten can you get when somebody betrays the United States of America and sticks up for these guys kneeling? They don't even know what they're kneeling about, and everybody keeps quiet about it. You know, I, maybe somebody spoke up. If you did, fine. I haven't heard one of you make a comment about this. How we, in Wisconsin, can be quiet while you have a quarterback who okay's this? And, you know, I, it hits home pretty hard that my wife, her brother was in a landing and during World War II, he had a dog with him to snoop out the foxholes, and the dog got shot. And when her brother bent down to see these, what's happening with him, and he looked up, he got a bullet right, right in the forehead, and he died. I had a brother too, Vietnam, sneaking around the jungles, seeing all these dead people floating on the rivers. He went in these homes to see what was going on. He was one of these, I don't know what you call him, but he prowled around the jungles at night amongst the enemy. He came back, he was so bad ashamed, they wouldn't even leave him in Woods Hospital. He slept under a tree out there for a week. And when I brought him in there, they kicked him out. He said, "He's too mental to come here." That's right after he returned from Vietnam, so there's a lot of people fought and died. I notice you have a, on 76th Street, you got a bunch of stones there honoring our soldiers. How about honoring the soldiers and the people who stand up for them at a public setting such as a Packer game? All I can say tonight is shame on Rodgers, shame on the administration, and shame on the National Football League, and shame on anybody that doesn't speak up. That would be like Hitler invading or something, and everybody's quiet about it, don't want to say nothing. This is a tragedy when people are allowed to disrespect the flag and the National Anthem, and nobody says nothing. And the other thing I want to quick bring up, many of you know I filed this lawsuit, and I just want to quickly touch on it. I did give District Attorney Chisholm a copy of the material I filed here. Many of you have seen what it is. And I want to just bring to your attention the fact that one of the reasons I sued the police on this, when the officer came, all of his attention was gathered toward the first part of this incident. I went with my wife, and there was no, I had no papers, we weren't going to say a word. Here they have an illegal sign sitting on the lawn. And later on, that Elizabeth came out and ripped it out of the ground. I got it back. I was ready to go home. I wasn't going to, there was no more incident. I didn't get hurt there, but after she went back into the voting booth, where she has rules supposedly, and she supposedly wasn't structured by the city of West Dallas, and she says she wasn't. How can that be? You send somebody out to do work, and they do poorly.
Mr. Brown, you have one minute remaining.
All right. Then after she, my wife came, because I can't stand long without leaning because of my swollen leg here, she came out and physically attacked me and tried to rip the sign out of my hand. And you notice the police officer, what, all he was interested is the first incident, when she pulled the sign out of the ground that was next to the one that the school board put up. But I got injured later on. That was over an hour and a half later, and this cop wasn't even interested, none of that. All he wanted to talk about is what happened with these signs in the lawn. By the way, everything I did was legal, and I don't know what's going to happen to this lady, but I have, she has absolutely violated battery and assault charge. I've given that to Chisholm and also...
Mr. Brown, that's time.
Okay, and I hope that, I know the time is running out for, that your answer is, has to be coming pretty soon on this. I am preparing a federal lawsuit, talked attorneys. You might wonder why you have a larger amount in there, and my injuries were just 5,000 or 6,000 from this. But every lawyer I talk to, don't want to touch it because it's a federal, this is going to end up being a federal lawsuit. If you guys want to deal with it, that's up to you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Good evening. My name's Dennis Kuss. I live at 11444 West Montana Avenue. There's four houses on the south side of the street, and one of them belongs to Jerry Matter back there, one belongs to me, one belongs to the Sims on the corner, and one belongs to the Sooters. Have a big problem with Hale Creek. Have all of you heard of Hale Creek? Do you know where it is? Have you ever seen it? It stinks. It's totally polluted. It's a disaster. Right now, it's not draining at all. Rosalie Reinke was kind enough to walk with me back through the brush, and I showed her the huge beaver dam that's got Hale Creek backed up four, it's four feet deep behind that beaver dam, okay? Rod River is backing up towards Cleveland Avenue. Hale Creek is backed up, in fact, she saw a little of the action, it was flowing backwards, going back towards the bridge over Cleveland Avenue. The openings on the bridge on Cleveland Avenue aren't in existence anymore. I went there this morning and they're totally blocked with water. There's another drainage that comes in that's pointed at what's called Autumn Glen, a big apartment complex. I talked to our engineering department, no one knows where that water is coming from, what's draining in, but it changes the colors of Hale Creek sometimes from its current gray and black to dark brown. I think we're getting a kind of a leak from sewage or wastewater from that apartment complex. A lot of stuff gets dumped into Hale Creek to make it so polluted. I'm not going to get into that, but I think your engineers were that, know where that's coming from. But there's a beaver dam in the Rod River right now. Rosie knows where it's at, and it's got everything backed up. Right now, my backyard has got more water in it than when you saw it, Rosie. And at that point, Hale Creek's about five feet deep. It should be only a foot deep. And it's about 30 feet wide. It's larger than some of the rivers in the state of Wisconsin. It is not flowing at all. It's just sitting there. Water continues to come in there. We don't know where. I talked to Joe Birch in our engineering department twice, and he's trying to figure out where that water is coming from. But I don't know if it's going to be the county, MMSD, the Corps of Engineers, the DNR, but I'd like you people to get after someone to get that beaver dam torn down. It's a result of beavers that have a colony that have taken down most of the softwood trees along Rod River between Cleveland and National. There aren't many softwood trees there anymore. They've taken down three 40-foot poplar trees in my backyard, one at Easter time and another small one that's jammed underneath the bridge on where Hale Creek goes underneath the parkway right now. They tried to take another one down that I've got sheet ironing around it, and I hope it survives. They tried to take an ash tree down in a neighbor's property, but I don't think the beavers can get through a hardwood tree. He's just got a big ring around the bottom where they tried to take it down. But this dam's got to be taken down. It's got to be blown up. It's got to be pulled out of there with a bulldozer or with a crawling crane or something. But it's getting to be very bad. It's totally unhealthy with this water coming into our backyards. And I can go on and on about Hale Creek with its pollutants coming into the softball diamonds, into Bellic Field, into the soccer area where the little kids play, and we've, you people have played sports. When you're playing baseball, you pick up grass, you eat it, you fall down, you put your fingers in your mouth and everything like that. But there's chemicals, there's petroleum products, there's trash, there's rubbish in this creek, and we've got to get it moving. At least we can get it moving out. Now, in the summertime, Hale Creek stinks. It's putrid.
Sir, you have one minute remaining.
And fortunately, it is cool now, therefore, it isn't that bad. It doesn't sting. But I'd like you people to put pressure upon someone, or even the city of West Dallas, to get this darn beaver dam ripped out of there so Hale Creek starts flowing. There's no reason it should be five feet deep. It should be at least a foot deep now or less because we haven't had much rain since the end of August. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
My name is Mark Vicenna. I live at 1338 South 65th Street. It's been a couple of months since I've talked to you on the 6500 bar, and I wanted to let you know that my feelings have not changed. I'm still fighting the battle, and I'm going to fight it until the end. I was thinking on the way over here, I grew up in West Dallas. My first council meeting, I was a scout, a Cub Scout. And I could have chose anywhere to live after college, but I chose West Dallas for my own personal reasons. I bought a house. I didn't inherit my house. I didn't get my house in a divorce settlement. I chose West Dallas, and I bought my house, and I care about my neighborhood. The last time I was here, and I've sent you all emails, there's a common denominator about this bar over the past 20-plus years. It's the same owner. Whether she ran it, whether her son ran it, whether they leased the bar, it's, it's been in the newspapers. It hasn't been in the press lately. It could very easily be in the press. But you're going to be voting on it, whether it's tonight or in the future, whether to give them a liquor license, and I want you all to please vote no. For the very simple reason is, the girls behind me, that's the future of West Dallas. They live in West Dallas, apparently. Their parents live in West Dallas. You guys know what's going on at the bar. You know what I had to deal with. All I asked when I bought my house was, you know, right to peace and quiet, right to safety. If you give them a liquor license, if you give her a liquor license as the owner of the property, let's clarify that. You're depriving me of my rights to live in my house safely and quietly. It's as plain and simple as that. I've supplied you all with police reports. You know, it started out as a bunch of pills in a safe and illegal gambling and buying liquor illegally and unlicensed bartender, has lately turned into bigger, bigger things. I don't want to scare the kids, but I think you know what they are. Attacks on our police officer, pistol whippings, all in a stone's throw from my house. And you've got the, you've got the control to deny him a liquor license, putting in, put an end to it, please. I know that most of you don't live, eight out of the 10 of you don't even live in my district. Closest alderman lives three, four miles from my house. But if you vote to approve their license, what are you telling the future of West Dallas? What are you saying to the kids? It's okay? It's okay to attack police officers? It's okay to run drugs and things like that out of a bar? So please keep that in mind, and I hope you vote with your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Louis Kowieski, 719 South 97th. I want to speak to the man's problem on the creek. Like I said, I worked for the city for 26 years, and I worked for a street and sewer. At one time, I fell in the beaver dam directly east of the plague, Hale Ballpark, okay? If you know anything about beavers, you don't want to tear their dam down, you're just going to lose more trees. You need to get rid of the beavers. You as administrators, I contacted, contacted at that time because it was backing up our water back to our pump station back there on Beecher, and we were wondering, you know, worried about it floods back there all the time anyway, what to do. You don't have to contact the US government, everybody else. You, whoever, who, I don't know, if Lewis is still Public Works Director, the mayor, I'll give you a confidential DNR warden number. You call him, he'll contact you to a trapper. You have to get a licensed trapper. He'll get rid of those beavers within three, four days. Then you take the beaver dam out, and your problem is done. That's got to be 10, 15 years ago since they last had that dam up there. And they had about five or six head of, head of water up and back in that woods to the north of Cleveland. I mean, some of us should just be walking the creek once in a while. You might just think we're goofing off, but we're not. You know, you got to handle the problems, and if you want this number, but you can't give it to anybody else.
Mike Lewis is in the back of the room.
Problem being solved in three quarters.
Glad you're here. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, we will close citizen participation. We will move to item F on our agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Moving to item G, the mayor's report. I have a few quick things this evening. The West Dallas Community Improvement Foundation is again hosting its community breakfast of Thanksgiving. This is the 34th year. It is going to be on Monday, November 20th at the Hampton Inn and Suites on Greenfield Avenue across from State Fair Park. It is a buffet breakfast with a small program to follow. It is also a food pantry collection site, and tickets are $30. We collect all the food there and then divide it up among the various food pantries in the West Dallas area. And that is, tickets are available at my office, or you can buy them online. Tickets are $30. Last week, at Nathan Hale High School, I was in attendance at the appreciation dinner for all of the block watch captains in the city of West Dallas, so I just want to take a minute to thank them. They were probably over 100... There were probably over 150 people in attendance there, and I just want to thank them for all the hours that they put in as their role in the block watch program. And the last thing is, just, many of you are aware, it was on the news, but we recently broke ground on the new Aurora Medical Facility over by the Market at Six Points redevelopment area. It was a 30,000 square foot, state-of-the-art medical facility that will be, is underway now. So, very exciting, first shovel in the ground on that project. We're looking forward to seeing that continue. That does conclude the mayor's report. Moving to item H, do we have any older persons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Older person probes.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Girl Scout Troop 8295 from Jefferson Elementary School for being here tonight to learn about women in government, and they would like to take just a moment to stand up and thank you guys for everything that you do for the citizens of West Dallas. So, ladies.
Thank you very much for having us.
So, they wanted me to help extend their congra, their thanks to all of the members of the Common Council, including the mayor. They all took a turn sitting in your seats, and they've decided which roles they will be taking in the future, so look out. Thanks, ladies, for being here. Now go home and study. Thank you. Mary Devine.
Thank you. Do we have any other older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Older person Reinke.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dennis Kuss for, for his presentation of our problem in our neighborhood. I want to tell him basically that I am still working on it, as well as the city people, as well as the county people, and as well as MS, MMSD. Right now, I've heard the other email that MMSD will not be doing anything. At this point, they have indicated that they don't want to destroy the surrounding area and its natural habitat, and they plan possibly taking care of it in January, when the ground is frozen. That's the latest I've heard. Tim Last is working very hard for us to try to get them to do something, however, we're at a standstill right now with MMSD. The Maquis County Parks man came out, and he totally agrees with us that something should be done, but the next entity is MMSD, and they have chosen not to do anything until the ground is frozen. Just wanted to give you heads up, Dennis. Also, on the happy side, it's hard to think Christmas, however, we, the celebrations committee is busy getting ready for the Veterans Project that we do every year at Christmas time, and this will start November 13th, when there will be a small Christmas tree set up in the entrance with stars on. The stars denote the veterans' name. These are veterans from the ninth floor at the Vets Hospital, and also the greenhouse that houses the veterans on site. These veterans, most of them don't have families, and the celebrations committee asks the community for their help in supplying gifts for these veterans. The gifts will be purchased by, hopefully, all of the residents in West Dallas. There's approximately 50 or more veterans that are affected by this. You bring the gift back, it's a minimal gift. Some of the gifts are, most of them are sweat, sweat tops and books, candy, calendars, they ask for anything that they would like for Christmas. These are the only gifts that the veterans get at this time, and they certainly appreciate it. So I just wanted to give you heads up that the tree will be set up with the stars next week, the 13th. You have until December 13th to return the gifts unwrapped, because the celebrations committee wraps them all, and then we deliver them the Sunday before Christmas. So, hopefully, we'll get the support from the community that we always get. You people are still very generous, and we appreciate it, as well as the veterans. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work that you and your committee do on this every year.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other older persons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the Common Council regular meeting of October 17th, 2017. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item J, items not referred to a committee, I'll ask for a motion to refer items six through 10 to the city attorney.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Barzak. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports under the License and Health Committee, Alderman Chaplaski.
Mayor Devine, I will report those out after the recess meetings.
Thank you. We have a, item L, a motion for suspension of the rules and reconsideration.
Mayor Devine, I move for suspension of the rules regarding items 23 and 24.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Mayor Devine, to give us-
I'm sorry, is there any objection to suspension of the rules? Okay, the rules are suspended.
Thank you. Can you give a bit of a background on this, just for the rest of the council? The council had voted in the past to pay a claim to the city arising out of this police incident. These are two similarly situated individuals from the same incident, and the city attorney's office finds it appropriate for us to reconsider this issue and decide do we want to do what we did before, and that is deny the claim or do something different. And so, I would move that we reconsider this, these two items, and they would go back to committee, it'd be the Administration and Finance Committee.
Seconds.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Lysick. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries, goes back to committee. Item M?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
We have a motion with a second by older person Reinke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.